All right, I will go ahead and call to order the special meeting for the zoning board of appeals for Tuesday, November 26th at 4:00 PM. If everyone could please rise and recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, next order of business, we have an oath of office to issue for Jill. She is a new board member. So if you don't mind Jill to stand up and raise your right hand for me.
She just needs to stand up.
I Jill Owen Dooson, I swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the city charter and code of ordinances of the city of Cedar Springs, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of zoning board of appeals board member to the best of my abilities. All right, so now I'll go ahead and open up the floor for nominations. Just a couple reminders, we don't need to have a second for that nomination. So if you have a nomination, just go ahead and make that, and then we'll take the roll call vote in the order of the nominations. So I'll go ahead and do that. The floor is now open for nominations for the office of chairperson.
I nominate Craig Owens.
Do you accept Mr. Owens?
It sounds weird hearing Owens because I'm never around people with the same last name usually.
Any other nominations? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the floor for nominations. All those in favor for Mr. Owens as chairperson, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Owens. I'll go ahead and issue your oath of office. I Craig Owens Dooson, I swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the city charter and code of ordinances of the city of Cedar Springs, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of ZBA chairperson to the best of my abilities.
I will.
He's got a purple nose there.
Thanks, I'll go ahead and I'll turn it over to you.
Need a nomination now as well for vice chair, so just, just a name, we don't need a second at this point. So any name that you'd like to?
I'd like to nominate Stephen Schmidt.
Other nominations? All right, seeing none, we'll close the floor for that. All right, all in favor of Steve Schmidt for vice chair, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Very good, we have a vice chairperson.
You always get your man, don't you?
All right, I Stephen Schmidt Dooson, I swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the city charter and code of ordinances of the city of Cedar Springs, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of ZBA vice chairperson to the best of my abilities.
I will.
Hi, Rose. How are you?
Freaking nail like that.
Don't you do that? That can hurt.
And now, we will open the floor for nominations for secretary of the ZBA. Again, we do not need a second, just submission of the name.
I nominate Jill Owen.
Okay.
Nomination, all in favor of Jill Owen serving as secretary, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Thank you.
Congratulations, Jill.
I Jill Owen Dooson, I swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan and the city charter and code of ordinances of the city of Cedar Springs to the best of my ability as the ZBA secretary.
All right, so if we could, now that we're taking care of that business, let's roll call for all of our ZBA members. Mr. Owens is here, Ms. Powell.
Here.
Oh yeah, I forgot, no ass on that one, mine. And then, Mr. Schmitz. I'd make a motion that we approve the agenda as it has been presented to us for our meeting today. Is there support for that?
Support.
Any questions or additions, changes? Moving the agenda, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Thank you, motion carries. Our minutes, if you can remember back to July of 2023, otherwise page 23 in your packet, if you need to refresh your memory on that, but I looked through that, I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes as presented for the July 20th, 2023 ZBA meeting. Motion, we have support. Does anybody see anything that you can remember from that far back? That we might need to address? Steve? Doing well, don't you?
Yeah, I sure do.
I do, it was with the wolves.
Yeah, with the wolves.
Yeah.
Successful conclusion.
Yes. It did, it worked out well.
So all, we have a motion and we have support, so all in favor of that motion to approve those minutes, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries, thank you. This is a part where we just check in with anybody if you have any report of a conflict of interest for the items, item of agenda that's before us today, or any ex parte communication regarding this, anything to report?
Oh, chapter.
Okay, seeing none? We'll move to our new business for this evening. Finally, I told you we had a lot of stuff to get through before we got to that part, but we are looking at a piece of property at 197 East Elm Street in Cedar Springs, and there has been a request for a variance on that property. And so I'll make a motion, I'll make the motion that we open the public hearing regarding that piece of property. Is there support for that?
Support.
All in favor of the motion to open the public hearing, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so our public hearing is now?
Open.
Ms. Falcon, you're going to address a couple of things on this.
At your table tonight, so letters were sent to everybody within 300 feet of this property. We did receive one notice that came to City Hall for your reference there. Maybe just from the city standpoint, I did most of my communication. Did you hear on this? I had a lot of discussion back and forth. The plan that was submitted does not meet code, so I explained to them that this is the appeal process, all unnecessary paperwork is in front of you. Our city planner did review it as well, this is part of your packet, the city planners' analysis of the hearing tonight. But all I have.
Ms. Spiner, would you like to address anything on this, or, or your real estate agent if you'd like to as well?
Sure.
Yep.
But if we could ask you if you're going to make a comment to step over here, because we are recording, so we need the microphone to pick you up. But while you want to take a quick moment to look through that, because is there anything that you would like to? Okay. Well, we will give you a moment to do that. On your computer if you want, that's page 20 in the packet, that's where the enters report is, if you need to review that as well. If you're ready, you can go ahead and.
Yes, what I propose to build is a one-story house, because I want to be able to age in place at that house and don't want to have to worry about stairs. So while the overall square footage of the house is within what the neighborhood would be, the footprint is going to be, would have to be slightly larger, because it's all on one story. And I think it's clear that I was not aware of the wetlands when I purchased the house. And my thought was, if it wouldn't fit on the narrow western side, then I could put it on the eastern side. But that, once we started talking to the city, turned out to be not feasible. That's the reason why the house footprint looks the way it does, is the desire to have it all on one story.
Yeah, just so.
By now, B-Y-A-N-O.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Dorr, and I'm with City Deshore Real Estate for the sake of your thing. I helped Laura actually purchase this property. When we were looking at this property, the fact that there was wetlands was actually concealed from us by the seller. And that's a different story. So when we were considering where we would put this house, its proximity is very close to family for her. This comes as a long-term plan, so when we took that consideration of how or where we were going to place this home, after discovering the wetlands, we realized the narrow portion of the property was the only place that we could do that. Originally, we had it set so that half of the back was on, was also not going to be within code, and the half of the front was not going to be in code, and we thought it would be best to actually shift it forward, so that it would be, with the setback variance in the backside, would be met. And then the front of the house, where it is actually going to be over, is actually beyond where the street ends. So it's actually that front end will be near the woods. Based on the wetlands and its placement, we can't actually bring water and sewer beyond that property anyway. And so whatever is going to be sitting in front of it, nothing can sit in front of it but the woods that are presently there. And so that's the only comment I would like to make.
Can you ask him? Tom?
Yes.
I got a question. So, where they're talking about doing that setback and bringing it forward, is their hookup then going to be close to where that existing fire plug is? There's a, on that, out on that corner where you're at.
Allowing the resident to hook up where the, we can't go to the end of the lines, so we'll back up from that. And then according to the, one of the construction workers that called me, they're going to do a 45-degree angle to the home, and then 45 it in the, within, under the home for the plumbing.
I'm Steve Coop, was sitting with Restore Construction. The proposal is what's happening is we're actually where the, that, well, or the hydrohydric is, we're going to shift it off to the side of that prior to it, come in at a 45-degree angle into the property, which would run into another 45, which would go down the line through the center of the home, and then all the service lines would go in there. And that way, we can get the water in the sewer in without disturbing anything else that's there, so it's.
Typically, that, that is not allowed. They would have to extend the water and sewer to the end of their parcel, which the end of their parcel through that wetland, why? When we can accommodate.
And did a bunch of walking and stuff, and so I was just curious about that, what?
What angle?
What, what you were going to?
Yeah.
So is that going to have like crawl space under it down?
Slab, so it's a zero entry home? Yep. No steps, correct.
That's all the questions I have.
See that where the lot and the lot line are, but I don't really see where the house is going to sit in all of these.
On 11?
11, okay.
To the west there, so.
The proposed houses in there.
It was wetlands.
So actually, it was Darla who let us know that it was wetlands.
So when you bought, when the property was being purchased, did you have a survey done first? Okay.
That was in October 23.
So they're, what they're trying to do.
Because it was two separate parcels that were 197 and 205, they were then combined to create 197 as it is.
That looks like one room.
No wetlands were rotated at that time on the survey.
To get her floor.
What's all this all about?
That's it found.
So he found that out when you started your planning to build the home?
Well, we when we started to, we got the proposed bill.
No, there's some kind of a funny little deal, I didn't walk all the way back in there. It's just kind of a funny, but you know, a lot of these older homes.
Seller's disclosure, had not located in here, was not aware. And that he had problems getting a development made because of it, and that's when he opted to sell.
So who laid the tile back there?
Don't know, wasn't us.
There's a, like a tile, like about where that wetland, a drainage tile that's sitting on an angle?
Well, that was installed when the apartment complex went in.
It doesn't even look installed, but I mean, it's laying, you know what I'm saying? So I'm just curious about that, but I surmised that when I was walking it.
Okay, to see that, yeah.
Eagle DNR approved this?
Not the site plan, but I've had several communications with Mr. Schaefer, who owned this prop, this parcel previously. He recently, like early July, early 2023, had to request Eagle come to this site and do an analysis. That was one of the maps in the parcel, in the packet here. This was by, this was determined by Eagle. Anything in the blue is wetlands and can't be built on. The rest of the parcel was buildable.
Yes, we have an email from Abigail Molsma of Eagle saying anything not shaded in blue, we don't need a permit to build there.
It's 13 and 14.
Right.
As long as we remain west of the culvert, we are in that.
Yeah. Yeah, when you walk it, you can, you can pretty well tell.
So on this, this right here, that's the culvert, right? Here. So on this right here, that line is the culvert, right?
There's a culvert drain or what is it going to? Yeah, yes, yep.
I, I don't know what the story, what that is, but it lays in the, that actually laying in the wetland.
According to the guy that owns the property behind, it just backs up. But it's not great anymore.
That could be a problem for you in the future?
It's, yeah, the house is hugged.
Yeah.
To the west.
Yeah, it's like 20 feet to the west.
Yeah, it's to the east where the. It's where the problem. Yeah.
It seemed to me when I looked that there's, there's a house on the north side and something on the south side that are all in, pretty much built in the same area.
All right, yeah.
To the east, so how would you know that that is wetland or protected?
If you're brave, you can walk more back there. It's pretty perilous. Yeah.
All right, any other questions for staff? Okay, so make a motion that we close the public hearing on 197 East Elm Street. Is there support for that? Need to ask staff, okay, so all in favor of motion to close public hearing, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Okay. Close that public hearing. All right, so we need to consider that application as the applicant has given it to us, comments shared here. Weigh that with the city planners' report that was given to us, and then looking at, for variance standards for it to be met, we have to, have to meet all of the requirements. It's not the majority of the requirements, but can meet all of the requirements to allow that the variance to be approved. So I am looking at, on the planners' report under number three, which is the second page of the planners' report. This is, appears to me to be one of the most germane points in here, that his, the closing sentence under his remarks, he says it has acknowledged that a compliant dwelling may not be designed and that the applicant desires, but the substantial property right, a single-family home does not appear to be denied here as a dwelling that complies with the zoning ordinance appears to be feasible. So it's, it's not incumbent upon us to change the, the variance or to allow the variance just to accommodate a home that has been designed. That's, that's not, it's not our fault to do that. So, in, in my, in my mind, I don't think that that's one of the points that is not met, which means that I don't think that the variance can be approved, but I'm willing to be convinced otherwise, if you have other thoughts on that.
Have you looked at adjusting the design of the house? We can, we can, I mean, okay, I was just trying to understand with what you just said, if we could, if there was adjustability in the design.
Doesn't fall under our purview. Again, we have to, we have to find that all of those standards are met in order to grant the variance. I think I concur with you, Mr. Chairman, as far as what you read here. Agreement with what your opinion is. Your thoughts?
So a variance is necessary for the provision or preservation enjoyment of a substantial property right? Similar to that's what's possessed of other properties. Being that most of it's wetland, their ability to actually enjoy and use the property as a house, seems to me that the adjustment is something that would be feasible, especially since it's beyond the end of the road. Because, so they could still enjoy it, because with the culvert and the wetlands, that makes most of the property not usable for that.
But, but the applicant did say that, by, by her admission, that they were built, they were building a house with a larger footprint. So we don't necessarily have to make a variance to the law to accommodate that. We're, we're not saying they can't build a house there.
But the larger footprint in order for sustainability. For long.
I know what you mean by sustainability.
For her to be able to sustain herself in that home for years to come, and age in that home. To me, that makes sense, just because wheelchair accessibility and all that, and zero entry.
But I can understand that. I just don't think that it's, it's within our purview to accommodate a variance just to, because they want a house designed a certain way. But, again, that's, that's why there's five of us here, because we're not all supposed to have the same opinion, but.
There a, a house design that would accommodate your needs to age out in that rather than what you have designed now?
Well, I purchased these house, my mom, Steve. So, I'm sure.
Way to accommodate the house for?
Not this house. That, that house has three bedrooms for her adult children to also live there. That's one of the reasons why we couldn't shrink it down much more, it is so narrow between that one space. That is part of the other piece of that, so I know that you're saying, hey, it's not your job to for us to figure out a redesign, just that it doesn't fit the, but there's a reason why it is the way it is. We even brought it smaller than it originally was.
We already had, we closed the public hearing, so you really, really shouldn't be asking them any questions at this point. We, we already, we already had that part, so. All right, guys, so we, we need to make a decision on here. Is there anything else that anybody wants to add? He said he agrees with this thought here on the engineers' report or the planners' report, number three. Ms. Polly, anything else to add on this? Well then, I'll make the motion that this variance request for 197 East Elm be denied for failure to meet all of the requirements in order for a variance request to be made. That'd be my motion. Any other comments? Have a motion, we have support? All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion to deny, miss carried. I don't believe we have any other business before us. Ms. Johnson, you got any other communication to share with us? Okay. Alright, I will make a motion for adjournment. There's support for that? Support. All in favor of adjournment, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Okay, thank you, we are adjourned. Very welcome.